Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to our meeting this evening. And I'll have us call it to order. And I'll have a roll call by our City Clerk Cathy Valdez.
The records show a flag that all members are present.
Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of covering or convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. So I have the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, there are no changes this evening.
I forgot that, okay. Okay, the next thing I'd like to do is have the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's going to be led this evening by Girl Scout Troop 1044. So, welcome to the Girl Scout Troop. And if we'll all rise.[55.12][55.12](APPLAUSE).
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much for doing that.[98.22][98.22](APPLAUSE). Okay, the next thing on our agenda is our City Attorney Darryl Piper will bring us out of our closed session.
Thank you, Mayor. The City Council met in closed session this evening on item number CS1. No action was taken that is required to be reported this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is our consent calendar, and the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to the Clerk's secretary. And items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. And we have 13 consent items, C1 through C13 this evening. And I don't, no one from the, out there has, the public has polled anything. How about from the City Council? Councilmember Franklin?
I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Councilmember Contreras?
Actually, I wanted to pull C13.
Okay. And would you make a balance, a motion for the balance of the consent calendar, maybe?
I would, yeah. I move to approve the remaining items on the consent calendar.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And so with that, we'll go to item C13, which is a final map for Perseia. And do you, Councilmember, would you like to take that?
Sure. You know, I just wanted to get a little bit more information on the Perseia project. One of my concerns is the intersection of Cananea and West Indian Rock, where it intersects with North Santa Fe. There've been a lot of collisions and issues with pedestrian safety. And I wanted to see if there's some more information that can be presented as far as what's going on in that intersection and what can be done to mitigate the issues, since we're going to be increasing the density there. I would only imagine that the probability of another collision would increase. Thank you.
Certainly.
So Conley, would you like to take that?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor. I do have a couple of slides that I put together for this. Project location is on the east side of North Santa Fe Avenue, shown here, north of Cananea. I believe the council member is referring to the intersection of Cananea, Indian Rock, and North Santa Fe, which is at the southwest corner of the project site. The general plan and the zoning are for 40 units to the acre. The Planning Commission approved an EIR and all of the entitlements for this project in June of last year. It was for 305 apartment units. It included a vesting tentative map, which includes conditions requiring recordation of a final map, subject to meeting all of the conditions of the tentative map. The city engineer certified that the applicant has met all of the conditions of the tentative map, and so the final map's before you tonight. This is the design of the project that was approved by the Planning Commission. I should note that at the intersection of Cananea, there is some widening that will occur for a dedicated right turn lane on that westbound approach, as well as a through lane and right lane that's combined. This is the architecture, contemporary. Some architectural elevations. This is the main driveway intersection on North Santa Fe. Pardon me. And another architectural review of that same area. And this is the final map, which would consolidate the 12 existing parcels that make up the 10-acre site. It's just basically a drawing that shows the full size of the property with the dedications that are required. And I'm available for any additional questions.
Did you have any further questions?
Yeah, you know, I appreciate all the information. It just doesn't seem like we're really addressing the scope of the issue on that intersection, especially, so I have a question. Is there going to be any fixing or addition to the traffic signal there? Because right now, what we have are, if you're going from West Indian Rock to Cananea or vice versa, there's a left turn yield, but that doesn't necessarily work too well in that. And we've already seen a lot of collisions that have happened. So my primary concern is, and I understand that the map is final, but I just want to make sure that we are going to be addressing the issues there, because I only see the possibility of increased collisions at that intersection. The widening is going to help, but you still have the situation where you have to yield when you're turning left, and then you have pedestrians crossing, you have people trying to go straight, and I just don't see that being addressed anywhere.
So we will have our traffic engineer take a closer look at that intersection, and we can identify any additional improvements that are needed. If there's anything tied to the development, we can certainly impose that on the developer. If not, we can come back to the council.
Okay. Thank you. Are you looking maybe for a left turn arrow? Is there not a left turn arrow? Yeah, maybe, because I know that gets confusing in some intersections for people, because they expect that they can just turn left. You know, people forget that there's not an arrow, so maybe they could look at that. So would you want to make a motion for, to approve this, or no?
Yeah, and you know what? I just, I do want to make, just a comment on the West Indian Rock portion of that intersection. There are, there's a gap in the red curb, and usually there's a van that parks there, so it makes it difficult visibility-wise when you're driving or if you're walking. You don't necessarily see a vehicle coming towards you, because it's hidden behind the van. So it would be really good to take a look at perhaps increasing the red curb there and eliminating the ability for someone to park. I'm a big proponent of parking, but when it's right in the immediate area of someone making a turn, it is quite dangerous.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, when you're looking for a motion for approving this?
I'll move that we approve this project as presented.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing are our public hearings. We have four public hearings this evening. So, public hearing number one is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the amendment to the Biological Preserve Overlay Zone. And the public hearing is now open, and our Community Development and Engineering Director, John Conley, is going to introduce the item.
Thank you, Mayor. This is an amendment to the Development Code for the Biological Preserve Overlay Zone. This was established in 2012 with adoption of our last general plan update and the associated zoning map. The Biological Preserve Overlay protects sensitive habitat areas within the city, consistent with a multiple Habitat Conservation Plan, which is the Regional Conservation Plan approved back around 2000. The Biological Preserve Overlay limits land uses and development, except for parks, trails, and essential utilities in those open space areas. As a result of unauthorized use of these areas, that is increasing, the damage to sensitive habitat and areas impacting water quality is occurring, and so staff is recommending some changes to the overlay zone. The BPO covers about 296 acres, all of which is city-owned or city-controlled properties that are shown here, particularly next to the sports park in the north part of the city, near the Costco and BMW dealership where the creek runs through the western part of the city near 78. And down in the south part of the city, Buena Vista Park and what we call La Mirada Canyon and the Business Park are the primary areas. The proposed project would amend the Development Code, specifically Chapter 18.15, to further limit the specified activities that are included in the ordinance. That would be specifically construction activities to build shelters or sanitation devices, removal of earth or vegetation, raising or capturing any biological material or wildlife, human waste, use of cooking systems, any illegal discharge to surface waters, or use of the area in terms of a structural improvements of any kind. The proposal will be consistent with the general plan, specifically goals in the land use element and the resource and conservation element. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this in December of last year, 7/0, and staff recommends approval of the ordinance as presented. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
I have a speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first?
Okay, Nana Oshlee. You have three minutes.
Thank you. I won't need that much time. And actually, it's Nancy, not Nana. I'm a third-year resident of Vista, and my name is Nancy Oshlee, and I'm opposed to this amendment, only because to me, it sounds like what we're trying to do is ban homelessness. And, you know, you can tell people you can't do X, Y, and Z, but I don't see, you know, where's enforcement? Where are they going to go? It's pretty much like trying to solve a flooding issue by making a ban on the rain and not putting any infrastructure in place of it. We need infrastructure to solve our homeless issue here in Vista. All those areas, that's where our homeless live. And you can make all kinds of rules. I guess you can arrest them and send them somewhere else, but that's not a very humane way to how to deal with it. So that's why I oppose this amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember, or Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Thank you. You know, this initiative really is about protecting land that has been set aside as environmental preserve. It's been set aside as required for protection for future generations. And for those of us, and I think several of us now have toured this land on foot with our COPS deputies, thank you for taking us down and kind of showing us what's happening there. If you were, if I could take you and show you, then you'd see that it looks very much like what you'd expect if you were visiting a landfill. Many, many thousands of pounds of trash discarded, huge quantities of unauthorized waste running off into the watershed, and really very shameful condition. And this initiative really is about protecting that land. And it's also about the future effort to open some of this land. There are trails that have been cut in this land, and the idea in the long term is to make those trails accessible to the citizens of Vista, to activate this land so that it becomes something that we all are familiar with and can enjoy, and all have a vested interest in protecting. And this is not an effort to create rules or laws to arrest homeless people. The judicial system and the laws of the state of California don't really provide any ability for us to arrest. There are laws that are on the books that are now either unenforceable or that the district attorney won't prosecute, and judges won't provide, you know, any penalty for. And there's not, there's not much value in arresting somebody that's homeless. What we do need to do is, we do need to continue to encourage individuals who are homeless to seek access, seek and access services. And we are actively bringing those services to the homeless that live in these areas. My colleague, Councilman Green, recently went with the COPS team and can vouch for what I can vouch for, because I've, I've been there and done it with the COPS deputies, that we are approaching the individuals who are homeless, and we're offering them everything from bus passes and food and medical care to access to rehabilitative services for drug rehab. But what I think's really important, and I think is a moral obligation of every one of us, is to speak up, not only for the environmental degradation, but more important, this issue is really about how human beings are being treated in our society and the conditions that they're living in. And they're unacceptable. They're truly immoral. And those of us on every end of the political spectrum should be able to agree on that, that no human being should have to live in those conditions, and that we have to work together to find a way to lift those individuals up out of that situation. They need to access those services that are made available, and they need to, you know, they need to be in safe and sanitary living conditions, because the conditions they're in now are not fit for any animal or any human being. And it is really a heartbreaking situation for those of us who've been there and observed it firsthand. So this is not about hassling people or about punishing people for doing something wrong. It's about what's the long-term vision for how we solve this problem in our community? That's truly what this is about. So I appreciate the interest from the community, and I appreciate comments from speakers, but I want you to know what's in our heart and what's in our minds as we consider this item.
Councilmember Contreras?
When you read the information presented on the Biological Preserve Overlay Zone, it's really easy to tell that this is about homelessness and not necessarily about the I should say, the primary reason is to address the homeless issue. The environmental reason is secondary. If, you know, it was more about the environment, then we would probably be having more conversations in the city of Vista about protecting the environment and having a bold climate action plan. But this is most definitely about homelessness. And I do have the concern as well, because we have individuals that don't have anywhere else to go. And unfortunately, they're building what could best be described as a shanty towns down in the ravines and the creeks. What I do want to hear from staff is, if we were to move, to have this amendment go forward, what additional tools does this provide us to clean up the area, but not to increase the criminalization of a population that has no means to, to pay fines and to go anywhere else and just pick up and move and go somewhere else? But I want to make it clear that this is first and foremost about homelessness, and environmentalism is second. I do think that we need more resources to be able to clean up our creeks, because we are in a very important part of the watershed. And so we have to understand that the water that moves through the city of Vista is going to end up in Carlsbad and into the aquifers. So I would like to hear what kind of resources this would provide us to combat what's, what's happening right now. So if, I don't know, Patrick, you can address that, or if John, you're able to address that.
With respect to the amendment, I mean, it's a zoning code amendment, so it's essentially police powers that we have under the zoning code, as far as what tools we have for additional enforcement for this particular rule. I don't think we've got additional deputies or staff that we're dedicating to it. It's just another tool to help us regulate the use of these areas that we don't currently have available to us.
So the enforcement would be through the Sheriff's Department?
Or code enforcement, correct.
Or code enforcement. So this, does this provide us any tools outside of that, when it comes to bringing more agencies together to monitor water quality and really get to the root of the environmental issue? Or is this primarily focused on the homelessness and removing that element from a sensitive habitat?
I would say it's the latter. The first part of your question is being done through our stormwater program now. We have testing, and we have a whole program. We are being notified by the Regional Board that we're at risk of our standards as a result of some of these problems in our watershed as well. So it's a problem that we're struggling with on both sides.
So what I'm hearing is the primary vehicle for enforcement would eventually go through the Sheriff's Department?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Green?
All right. So on January 16th, from the hours of 6:00 a.m. to about 12:00 in the afternoon, I had the pleasure of rolling around with our amazing COPS team. Two of those amazing deputies are standing in the back of the room today. And I was shocked at the condition of our, you know, BPO zones per se, 296 acres that we own. And all 296 acres don't look like this, but there are areas that look horrible, that are jeopardizing the integrity of our watershed, and they leave us vulnerable as a city and exposed to lawsuits from, you know, federal, you know, environmentalists, you name it. They can come down and sue us for messing up the watershed. The only law that our COPS team has that they could basically enforce is, from the fish and game, that you can't have a habitat within 125 feet, I think, of a creek. And I'm sure, you know, our Sheriff's Captain can verify exactly what that law is, but there were huge homes that were, that were built, foundations that were built, living rooms, bathrooms, bedrooms, and it was a really deplorable living condition. And I want to make sure you know, our sheriffs aren't about arresting homeless people at all. They're there to help, and the questions that were asked is, hey, where are you from? We're helping people get IDs. We're asking them, hey, if we give you a bus ticket to Vegas, is there somebody that will receive you? There was a homeless man that wanted to go to Kentucky, and they arranged with their grandparents to get him out there. And the thing is, we can't just ship homeless people out of our towns. We have to have somebody on the other end to receive them and provide programs for them as well. So as a city, that's our COPS team's job, basically, is to go out there, let them know about the programs that we have. You know, even when we saw the house that was built in that biological area, I mean, I thought they were going to take them out. They had every reason to. There were drugs in there. I mean, it wasn't, you know, like conducive area to live. But they said, hey, we're going to be, we're sending an abatement team. We just want to make sure you know, you can't technically live here at city property, and within this amount of time, we're going to be there to abate it. But the second you tear it down, they build it back up. In the six hours I was with them, they have certain spots that are constantly recurring spots in our area. And as opposed to having them, you know, jeopardize our environmental areas, we'd like to get them somewhere else now, even if we were, we're not saying we're going to fence it off or anything, because they would, you know, you cut through fences to get to the area. But we do want to make sure that when the cops are there, they can at least say, hey, we do have these laws in Vista where you can't stay here, but we do have other places for you to stay. We do have other services for you. A lot of people are there because they don't have IDs. If you don't have an ID, you can't get a job. And where do you start? So our COPS team is specifically out there to provide resources and access. Now, when we were there, there was a situation where there was somebody running, a dangerous person in the area, and the ARIA helicopter came, and we're fighting bad guys. But, you know, the truth is, this problem, I took tons of pictures. I'll post them online. It was a little embarrassing as a city official to look at our, our own land in that type of condition. So I really feel like, yes, is this a homeless issue, is this an environmental issue? It's a little bit of both. And we need to work with them in order to solve this problem. But we also do have to protect our lands and protect our water, what's going into the ocean. And I think that this is a great start and a great way to get that done. And in Vista, we've also allocated funds within our city to figure out how we can combat homelessness, as opposed to just throwing money at different areas like we've done in the past. So we're really looking at a way to address this and help our community. So we're not here to hinder, we're here to help, and our COPS team is there to help. And I was super impressed with their people skills and their desire to actually help. And they've, they'd only arrest you if you have a warrant. I mean, there were 13 people staying in one building, and one person had a warrant for a drug possession. The 11, other 11 got left out, but the one with the warrant got arrested. So they're really doing their best, and I feel like this really does give them another resource, and it helps our community in the long run. So this is something that I do definitely support.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
Yeah, I want to ask our City Manager, how many beds do we have available at last count to accommodate? If there's somebody that's homeless in Vista and they want to go to a shelter tonight, how many beds do we have available to serve that purpose? And if you need a few minutes to get the number?
I don't have the number off the top of my head, but we have Operation Hope that takes in women and children. We don't currently have a facility in Vista that takes in single males, and that's part of the issue.
Don't we have a contract with other service providers outside of Vista to accept?
We have agreements through CDBG funds that we partner with them, but we don't have any contracts in terms of, like, for bed use.
So the question is, if our deputies contact somebody in the field and they want to go, they want to be sheltered, do we have access to take them somewhere? If somebody wanted to be, you know, they contact them at, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, and they want to be sheltered that night, do we have?
Our deputies have resources, may not, some of those resources may not exactly be in Vista, but they have resources. As Councilman Green, or as you stated, you know, they work with the McAllister Institute, they work with other institutes to come in and review and, and create a patient log, so to speak, so that they can try to help. But yeah, they do have a lot of resources.
Look, I think that question is important to this decision, because, you know, we're, we are, it's my understanding, and I'm sorry I put you on the spot for kind of a technical answer. Sometimes I assume you have all those things just rattling around up there, but, but the reality is, we do have, we do have shelter and, and other services available for people that want to seek help. The vast majority of people, if you go with the COPS team, and by the way, the COPS team goes out, they have somebody from County Health, and they have social workers from some of the private groups that we contract with to provide services. And it's really the social workers that are interviewing each of these individuals and asking them, you know, what kind of situation they're in, what's their job situation, what's their health situation, what kind of medical care are they getting? And they're really trying to build a rapport and relationship, and I really commend the approach, because the first thing you have to understand is, we're, we're past a point in California where we're arresting people for being homeless, and we're past the point where we're taken. And that's not happening anymore. There's, there's no quarter for that kind of activity from cities in the judicial system. So they're not, not from our county district attorney and not from our courts. So those, I mean, you can, just, those tactics are not on the table. They're not on the table. So then, what we have, we have very little, I mean, in every public policy problem, there's carrot and a stick, right? You have, you have to use certain means to compel people to do the right things, and then, or I should say, to incentivize them, and then there's the other half of it is compelling them, right? We are really out of options to compel people to do the right thing. And so this is really about building more options to incentivize people. And it's, this is also, again, about a long-term plan to incentivize citizens to take ownership of this land, to come in and use the trails. And we are a long way away from, you know, the point where we're, have this area cleaned up. One of the other points that should be made, if there are members of the community or councilmembers that are unaware, is we do, on an annual basis, is it once a year or twice a year, that we pay a service to go in, and they round up tens of thousands of pounds of, of debris, and they cart it away.
We, typically, we've done it once a year, but I think, based on your experiences and what we've talked with the Sheriff's Captain about, we need to do it more, definitely, within our open spaces. And the last one we did, for example, I believe the, the price tag was somewhere around $13,000 to $14,000.
Yeah, and I don't shy away from the fact that this is a conversation about homelessness.
Yeah, and I don't shy away from the fact that this is a conversation about homelessness. It's absolutely what it's about. And I don't, you know, I don't make any secret of that. That's, you know, the county, the entire council in our, you know, with, before the addition of our newest council member, you know, we have elevated addressing the homeless issue to be one of our highest level priorities. And I think all of us here have a heart to do, to address the problem in a meaningful way. And the reality is, there are two groups within the homeless community. There's a group of people who want to access services, and they don't want to be homeless. And then there's a group who, because of whatever strings come along with it, or whatever past circumstances, they're not accepting the help when it's being offered. Those individuals who won't accept the help when it's being offered, that is a real challenge. And to me, I, I feel like the, you know, the family homelessness aspect of it, when we use that word, family homelessness, we're really talking about, you know, a mother with maybe children, and usually that's typically the definition, is mother with children. You know, there aren't very many women with children that won't accept, you know, a safe, clean place to live if they're out of one, right? So those individuals are easier to help. But a methamphetamine or heroin addicted male can be quite difficult to help, because a lot of times, they refuse the help. And I, I'm, I'm going to speak out, it is a moral outrage in our society that we don't stand up and say, that's someone's brother, that's someone's son, that's someone's father. And if it's your family, and I have, I, as recently as Monday of this week, I spoke to somebody who was a former narcotics addict. And I've spoken, as I knock on people's doors in Vista, I've spoken to the families of people whose children have been drug addicts and lived on the streets of Vista. And, and I asked them, I said, you know, my rhetoric is, I think you deserve to have society reach out and lift your family member up, because it's not something that you can do. You can't go and compel your family member into, you know, sober, clean, living situation. Society is the only entity that can do that, and government is the only entity that can do that. And government needs to come to the assistance of the individuals who are living in these circumstances and their families, because we're, we're turning a blind eye. And if you're out there living on the streets, you're either severely mentally ill, which I think we can all agree, without further debate, if you're severely mentally ill, that you should be receiving, you know, services, and, you know, and you shouldn't be allowed to live on the street. Because if you're severely mentally ill, you don't have the faculties to make good decisions about your, your physical well-being. And I think somebody who's addicted to heroin or methamphetamine is in almost the exact same situation. They've given up the ability to make rational decisions about their own well-being. It is not moral to look at somebody who is addicted to methamphetamine or heroin and to say, you know what, it's okay for you to live here. Because that person no longer possesses the faculty to make good decisions about their well-being. And that person's family really tremendously wishes, and I know because I've talked to their families, their families really wish that government and society would help them lift their loved ones up out of those conditions. And I am going to continue to be very vocal about this. It's not a Republican issue, it's not a Democrat issue, it's a, how do we treat other human beings in our society? Do we walk past people who are in need, or do we reach out and we give them a hand into a safe and a clean environment? These are human beings, they deserve that. And I believe that everybody should stand up for that. And I, you know, I, I've, it's kind of bombastic, and it's a new approach, but, you know, so easy to talk about the people that want help and to help them. And so very difficult to do something about the individuals who refuse help, but we have to help everybody. So, sorry for the long diatribe, but I really care about this. I passionately believe this is about truly helping people who need it. And I'm really hopeful that we'll have all of us on board with this, because I really believe it's morally the right thing.
Our city manager wanted to have a couple of words here.
Yeah, I just wanted to give an update that we are working through, as all of you know, the Homeless Master Plan or the Homeless Strategic Plan. We have consultants that are working on this, interviewing members of the public, staff, the council, of course. And we were likely going to bring that topic back to you in March and April to continue the dialogue and to get your input. The other issue that I didn't mention to Deputy Mayor Franklin is, we are a member of the Regional Solutions Regional Alliance for Homelessness. And so we do have resources through that program. Our sheriff's department has the same resources which they use when they encounter somebody that's willing to accept those, as was mentioned. But we are a member of that. So there are tools, we may not have a shelter for single males within Vista. However, we have resources outside of Vista as being a member.
I would just say that we met with Supervisor Desmond, and he's working on the homeless issue, and he's working with the mayors of the 578 corridor cities, and we're working on some plans there also. So, because he has some money for some programs, and we're just kind of been working with some people kind of behind the scenes. So we've got, things are, there's help coming on the way. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is a great discussion. And I was going to talk about what the city manager brought up, that we are not in this alone. This is a huge problem, the homeless situation, the homeless. When I was in Sacramento last year, one of our state senators said that the homeless situation in California has become a humanitarian crisis. So it isn't just in Vista, it's statewide. So we are working not just here alone with us and our resources and trying to figure it out. We are working with regional task forces and regional alliances, trying to, trying to not just build the infrastructure as you asked for, for the homeless community, but also to address why we have such an enormous homeless population and why it continues to grow. A lot of it is economic, some of it is mental illness, quite a bit of it is, is drug addiction, alcohol addiction, issues like that. So there are many reasons why people are homeless, and there are many ways to help the different people who are homeless. A lot of people won't accept the help no matter what. And it sounds like all of us up here have, have had interactions. We go, I know I go and I visit with the homeless, I talk to them, I ask them if they want help, find different resources for them if they say yes. A lot of them say no, they don't want any help. That's a lifestyle choice. That presents a problem, because some of the things that are happening in our community, through the homeless community, through the homeless sites, the encampments, is a public health and a public safety issue for the rest of our community. So yes, it's imperative that we help the homeless population and, and decrease the homeless population to find a place for everybody. But it's also important at the same time that we look out for and help the rest of our population, and to make sure that we are taking care of, as it was already mentioned, what happens in Vista ends up in the watershed and ends up out in the ocean. And we have to be, we have to recognize that as well. So just because we want to take care of this environmental aspect does not mean that we are not looking at homeless situation as a whole. It doesn't, one, doing one does not preclude us from doing another. So I just wanted to make sure that we all understood that, that we can be doing different things at the same time to approach this problem from different directions. And that's where we are going. And, and I just want to reiterate what was said, and I think Councilwoman Green said it, because I heard some grumbling when Deputy Mayor Franklin said that, you know, we help, we get bus tickets. We cannot by law give anybody transportation if there's not somebody at the other end already agreeing to accept them. I don't want people to think we're just busing people out of town, because that is not happening. We have to have somebody at the other end who's agreed to accept them. Family members is, I know, a lot of times we help people get back east to, to family members. So I am, I am absolutely in support of this, of this resolution. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to approve.
Make a motion?
I would make a motion that we close the public hearing and approve the recommendation as it is presented, the biological preserve overlay zone.
Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, you know what, I just, I want to make sure that we always discuss what exactly is going on when we present these types of things to the public, right? So this amendment, I'm glad that we've come to an agreement that it really is about homelessness as well as the environmental factor. And I understand that we have a big responsibility to make sure that we uphold public health. But again, I just want to reiterate that I am so happy that we were able to have a good discussion on the root of why this is on the agenda today, which is the homelessness issue. So that's all I have to say. Thank you. Oh, and I look forward to working with you, Deputy Mayor Franklin, on this issue.
Would you want to second the motion? You don't have to.
I will. I second.
Okay. With that, I will ask everyone to cast their votes. That motion passes unanimously. Our second public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the proposed adoption of the sidewalk vending regulations. And the public hearing is not open on that. And our assistant to the city manager, Tony Winnie, is going to provide the staff report. Oh, or is our assistant city manager, Ali Zimmerman, going to do? Tony, okay.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So a new state law, known as SB 946, took effect on January 1st, requiring all cities to authorize the operation of sidewalk vendors on public sidewalks and sidewalks within city parks. Under SB 946, sidewalk vendors can sell food or merchandise from a pushcart stand, pedal-driven cart, wagon, rack, or other non-motorized conveyance, or from one's person, upon a public sidewalk or other pedestrian path. Examples of sidewalk vendors could include, but are not limited to, hot dog vendors, coffee carts, popcorn vendors, newspaper vendors, flower vendors, clothing vendors, et cetera. SB 946 also allows cities to regulate sidewalk vendors in a manner consistent with how they regulate other businesses. The item before you tonight is a proposed ordinance to implement sidewalk vending regulations. The ordinance would prohibit sidewalk vendors in areas located within the immediate vicinity of a permitted certified farmer's market, a permitted swap meet school, or an area designated for a special, or a temporary special permit issued by the city, and prohibit stationary vending on sidewalks less than 10 feet in width. All sidewalk vendors would also be required to secure a business license. A violation of the proposed ordinance would constitute an administrative fine. In order to prevent an unsafe concentration of business activity on sidewalks and in public parks, the proposed ordinance states that stationary vendors would not be able to locate within 200 feet of each other on public sidewalks. Vendors within city parks would be prohibited from operating in an area where the city already has executed an exclusive agreement for food and/or merchandise, such as the Moonlight Amphitheater. All vendors would also be prohibited from operating on city-owned property other than city parks, such as the downtown parking lot, or within the undeveloped right-of-way. Mobile vendors would be allowed to operate within commercial and residential areas and city parks. Stationary vendors are not allowed in residential areas. Vendors on public sidewalks must maintain proper clearance for pedestrians to utilize the sidewalks as well. Those vendors that utilize a stand or a cart to conduct business would be required to meet basic design standards as outlined in the proposed ordinance. Applicants would be required to submit a picture of their existing cart or detailed set of plans for their proposed cart to the community development department for review. After the cart is built, remodeled, or purchased, operators would then be required to bring the unit in for inspection by city staff. On the screen are examples of stands or carts that would meet the proposed design standards. A resolution is included as Exhibit 2 of your agenda packet to authorize the fees necessary to implement the program and recoup costs of staff administration. In addition, the city is required by the FBI to adopt an authorizing resolution stating the reasons for requesting live scan results, which is also attached as Exhibit 3. Staff recommends adoption of the attached city council ordinance, adding Chapter 8.78 to the Vista Municipal Code regulating sidewalk vending, and adoption of a resolution establishing a fee or charge for sidewalk vending permits, and adoption of a second resolution approving access to state, local, and federal criminal history for these licensing purposes. That completes my presentation, and myself and Ms. Zimmerman are here to answer any questions you may have.
I have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker first? Okay, John Byram.
My name's John Byram. I'm from North Coastal Prevention Coalition. And just your, your last issue, I was a homeless crack addict. And I'm not anymore. We work with the street fairs across North County and have a policy about what folks can sell. And one of the things we wanted to do is make all these family-friendly. And we came up with a policy that said no tobacco, tobacco slash drug paraphernalia, or any item that promotes the use of a federally illicit drug is prohibited from being sold. And I'm wondering if you could add something in like that, so we don't have marijuana shirts and, and drug paraphernalia being sold on the streets of Vista. I've already seen, I went out and did assessments of some stores, and right now, in the city of Vista, there's three stores selling drug paraphernalia. So I would hate to see that on the streets. And that's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, John. Okay, Councilmember Green.
All right. So I did have a few questions. First off, with the stationary vendors, is there a limit to the number of stationary vendors that we can have within our city? Or is it like, if they're within, what is it, 200 feet of each other, we could literally have a stationary vendor every 200 feet on public sidewalks or in our parks, per se?
Theoretically, yes.
So there is no limit?
It would be more dictated about from market conditions.
Yeah.
Where they would want to sell, and how many the market would bear, and also minimum design standards. So that includes, you know, proper clearances that they have to maintain with the sidewalk and from other street features like fire hydrants and, you know, providing ADA access and those type of things.
So even as a, as a stationary vendor, they have to provide ADA access or some type of access, I guess?
Correct.
Okay. And then the other question I had for them is, how do you determine space priority? So like, a stationary vendor might have better business at our sports park, you know, where the soccer games and things are played, as opposed to a spot on the side of Bobier, you know? I mean, how do you figure out who gets those best spaces? And then when you get that space, do they get that space forever? Is, I know they have to renew their cart annually, I think it was 84 bucks or something to re-inspect their cart every year. But like, do they have that space forever? Like?
They would have that space for a year until they decide to renew. They could relinquish it anytime, but they would-
But they would have to relinquish it, though?
They would have to relinquish it, I guess.
So you could hypothetically start a stationary business at a park that's going to be there forever?
Well, you have to be able to remove the, the cart at the end of the night. So there are certain operating hours. So it does have to remain somewhat mobile, even though we're calling it a stationary vendor. The stationary part is the fact that it will remain in one location during business hours.
And we have, and I'm sure I, you know, like, we don't let them put like a fifth wheel as their mobile, like, they can, if they have a big bike, I guess, they can pedal that thing around, right? There's size restrictions and all that within these?
Yeah, there are design standards, but they do have to pertain to health and safety.
Okay.
So our ability to regulate the aesthetic looks of, of these things are rather limited.
Oh, wow. So they could look however they want, pretty much, as long as they meet this health and safety standards?
Yes.
And it's my understanding, we don't really have much authority over this, because the law was passed at the state level, so we have to abide by it.
Correct.
All right. And then, as our speaker said, is there any way for us to implement that we don't want them selling tobacco or drugs or drug paraphernalia, per se? I mean, the t-shirts thing, I don't, I don't know, we can dictate what their t-shirt designs are, if they're a t-shirt sales place. But I would think, and I don't know what my council members would see, but it's in there, right?
Yeah. So if you look at the ordinance, if you look at Section 8.78100, there is a section that says, no sidewalk vendor shall sell any alcohol-related beverage.
Okay.
Tobacco or electronic vaping products, cannabis products, weapons, including knives, guns, or explosive devices, pharmaceuticals, or other products identified in a list adopted by resolution or ordinance of the city council. So if the city council decides at a future time that there's some sort of item that is for sale that they would like to change, then we can change that at a later date as well.
And then another last question, sorry to ask so many questions, is about the moonlight. So I know you said that we can't have like a competing food vendor with a moonlight. Is it like 10 feet across the street where like, you can line that, you know, like the walkway up to the moonlight with food vendors? Or are we saying if we have a moon, like, we don't want any food vendors in our park when we have an event?
Yeah, they would need to keep at least 200-foot distance from the moonlight. So they could be in the vicinity.
So they could still be in the park, just not-
Correct.
They can be in the park, they need to be on sidewalks. And if they're mobile, they would again be able to walk around. But if they want to be a stationary vendor, they would need to maintain the access and width. So, and they can't be in the undeveloped part of, of the city property.
You still have to leave the certain amount of space on the sidewalk for the ADA regulations and things like that. regulations and things like that. And if we approve this, last question, if we approve this, people can start applying for permits, how quickly, to start these types of businesses?
Yeah, we're ready to receive applications just as soon as the ordinance were to go into effect.
Wow, all right. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Contreras.
I read through the ordinance. It's really good. It's very comprehensive. For those who want to take a look at it and want to see what is prohibited, you can just look at the prohibited sidewalk vending locations. There are certain things, though, listed under Number 5. No sidewalk vendor shall stop or locate to transact business within 400 feet of a freeway entrance or exit, 100 feet of a primary or secondary public or private school on any school day beginning one hour before the start of school and one hour following the ending of school, 50 feet of the driveway entrance to police or fire station, 5 feet of a marked or unmarked crosswalk, 5 feet of the curb return of an unmarked crosswalk, 5 feet of any fire hydrant, fire call box, or other emergency facility, 5 feet ahead, and 5 feet to the rear of a sign designating a bus stop, 10 feet of a transit shelter, bus bench, or bus stop zone, 5 feet of a driveway or driveway apron, 10 feet of an outdoor dining or patio dining area, 18 inches from the edge of a curb. So there's a lot. I highly recommend for individuals who are interested to take a really good look at this ordinance. I also read the law that spurred this into action, which I'm a fan of because this is creating low barrier entry for entrepreneurs, which is a really good thing. I do take issue with two parts. One, and they're actually under Section 8.78.090, Letter C talks about bringing in the cart or arranging for the cart to be inspected. I 100% agree if someone is selling food, has any kind of perishable goods, that that is essential. However, for those who have non-perishable goods and their cart is within a certain size that is permissible, because part of the permitting fees, taken into account staff time, I just think that it's unnecessary to bring a cart to City Hall or arrange for a meeting with, for someone to go inspect it if there are not, no goods being sold that could be perishable. As soon as you open, you know, a bag of Hot Cheetos and you start doing stuff to it, like, 100%, but if you're just selling T-shirts or, you know, here's my latest album, then I don't really see the need to bring that cart into the city for inspection. The other issue that I take is in the same section, but under Letter D, Number 5, II, which discusses canopies. I also don't see the reason for a canopy other than shade for the actual vendor. To me, it seems like an unnecessary addition and barrier, and that it could possibly force someone to have a bigger cart in order to accommodate the canopy. So those are the only two parts of this ordinance that I take issue. The rest is great, so thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor Franklin?
My question is, does the new state law demand that we allow them to operate within our parks at all?
Yes, it does.
What about operating in a center median, is that still prohibited?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pardon me. In looking at, and it was alluded to earlier, the design standards, and you said that they're very limited in what we can implement as far as design standards. In our chapter here, Section 8.78.140, Design Standards for Vendor Carts, but when you look at that section in the text here, it says that it is awaiting counsel. Let me go, let me find it in here. It says additional, that section is titled Additional Rules and Regulations. To assist in the implementation of this chapter, the council may by resolution adopt additional objectives, rules, and regulations allowed under, et cetera, et cetera. So to me, that would indicate that although we are limited in what we might do for design standards, you anticipate that we might be able to do something, and that will be coming back to us at a future date.
There are design standards already identified in Section 090, Letter D.
Mm-hmm.
I do believe that the section you're referring to is just to keep the window open if there is anything that the city council would like to address in the future.
Okay, well, so my question was, it specifically states design standards. So I wasn't sure if perhaps we'd want to change the title of it in the introduction to something relevant to what it is in the text, if it's not specifically for design standards.
Thank you, Councilwoman Rigby. I see what you're talking about. I think that's just an administrative typo. We should change the name in the table of contents to address the actual title of Section 140, which is Additional Rules and Regulations. Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
Just wanted to marry those two up. So with that, Madam Mayor, I would like to go ahead and move that we approve the staff's recommendation and the new resolution regarding sidewalk vending in the city.
I would second that, as long as it includes with direction to correct the typographical error.
And close the public hearing with the typographical correction. Thank you.
Okay, that looks like all the speakers, so please cast your votes. That passes unanimously. Next public hearing is related to a filing and processing fee for applications for medical cannabis dispensary businesses. So our public hearing is now open, and our city attorney, Daryl Piper, is going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor. The proposal before you is to adopt a resolution approving a filing and processing fee for the applications under Measure Z for a medical cannabis business. The proposed fee, $9,368, was actually tendered today by all of the applicants for a Measure Z license. We had 31 people, not apply, but 31 people who brought their check for $100,000, plus their check for $9,368, to the community room this morning and received a number for the drawing. 29 of those people actually filed their application and paid this fee. We had no one object to the fee. The fee has been based on an estimate of the hours that would be required by the various departments in the city for processing the applications, and the hourly rates are those established in a survey that was done for the city reflecting our loaded costs. That concludes my presentation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I have two speakers, which I'll take them next. Dean Scott, and he'll be followed by Benjamin, Benjamin didn't put his last name down here.
Good evening. My name's Dean Scott. I'm a father of three, scout master here in the city of Vista, coach over with Vista Storm. I'm here to support the continuation of the moratorium against marijuana businesses operating unlawfully in the city of Vista. I agree with the staff report that this moratorium is necessary because unlawful businesses have in the past and still do operate in Vista. This disrespect for Vista's laws does endanger the public health.
You know what, you're talking about the wrong one. You're talking about PH4. PH4. You're talking about the next one that comes up.
Oh.
Which is the extension of the moratorium.
My bad.
Yeah, so can you, are we also, Benjamin, talking the next one coming up?
It's on PH4, yeah.
PH4. So why don't you, can you just wait and then we'll take you right after?
I would love to wait.
Would you? [laughing].
All right, I apologize.
It's okay.
We were coming from Phil hockey and wrote it down too fast.
Take him in order, you know how it is, so, and you, too, Benjamin, we'll get you in a minute. Okay, so, let's see, where were we? We are, I'm looking for someone to talk. Anybody?
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
I would go ahead and move that, close the public hearing and approve the recommendation, filing and processing related to applications, approving and, approving the filing and processing fee for an application establishing a medical cannabis business in the city of Vista, and approving access to state, local, and federal criminal history information for the licensing purposes.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
I'll second that.
Okay, seeing other speakers on this, I would ask you to cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. So then the next one we have here, hold on, is public hearing number four. And this is a public hearing to receive testimony regarding the extension of a moratorium on marijuana-related uses other than those permitted by Measure Z. So that public hearing, this public hearing is now open, and city attorney Piper is going to introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor. On December the 11th, the city council adopted a short-term moratorium on marijuana-related uses other than those approved by the voters in Measure Z. Tonight, we are requesting that the council extend the moratorium for an additional 10 months and 15 days while we proceed with the process of developing the Measure Z dispensaries. As I believe the council is aware, this is a very time-consuming and intensive process, and what we want to avoid is having illegal operations move into the city during the processing process and start undercutting the legitimate dispensaries before they're even able to open for business. So the measure, while it runs for another 10 months, the council can shorten that once we're through the Measure Z process and we have a grounding as to what other developments, such as testing laboratories or anything like that, the council might wish to introduce at that time. But in the meantime, we think it's important that it be clear that no other uses, other than those permitted by Measure Z, are to be introduced into the city until we're able to understand where this process leads. It will take some time, not only to process the applications, it will take some time for the businesses to get all of their state permits, their building permits, and to begin business, and at which point we will learn what next steps might or might not be appropriate to take. That concludes my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, prior to hearing from the public, could I make one very brief question? I would really like, and I agree with extending a moratorium on dispensaries, but I would really like to hear specifically about uses like testing, because we have individuals that have brought forward their desire to engage in that. It's not a retail business, and given the outcome of the Measure Z vote, I haven't made a decision, but I'd really like to hear from members of the community who have an interest in speaking. I'd really like to hear specifically on those types of related uses that are not related to the sale.
At a different meeting?
No, I kind of wanted to inform the comments of those who might speak to us tonight, because I honestly want to hear what they have to say about that.
Okay, I have three speakers. Everybody okay with that? Okay, so Kelly McCormick is before you guys, so Kelly McCormick.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Kelly McCormick. I'm a public health educator. I run a youth mentoring program, and I'm the parent of two teenagers. Therefore, I'm speaking in support of the moratorium on marijuana businesses outside of what's dictated by Measure Z. Like many others in Vista, I was disappointed that hard-working, carpool-driving, short-on-time families were not able to make their voices heard against the deep-pocketed marijuana industry, which targeted Vista and spent more than a half a million dollars to gain passage of Measure Z. The pot industry initiative was not written with the best interests of Vista residents in mind, but with marijuana industry insiders being the big winners. I realize that most of you on the city council did not support Measure Z because you're aware of the negative impacts it can have in a community, impacts such as an increase in drug-impaired driving, an increase in new users and heavy users, and an increase in ER visits due to overconsumption of high THC concentrates and edibles, all problems that we've seen in cities with pot shops. And let's not overlook the harm of normalization when teens and young adults receive the message that pot is harmless and something that the larger society not only accepts, but encourages. Normalization is the goal of the industry, as pot promoters have stated many times. They grow their businesses and their bank accounts by attracting new customers and getting them to come back for more on a regular basis. Therefore, I urge you to enact limits on advertising and signage for marijuana businesses. The city of San Diego is overrun with billboards, signs, sign twirlers, even marijuana ads on the backs of pedicabs. Such ads in Vista would hurt the city's reputation, its appearance, and further normalize pot. Please put public health and safety first. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Dan, Dean Scott.
I'm back. Again, like I said before, I work with scouts here in the city. I work with soccer here in the city. I agree with the staff report that this moratorium is necessary because unlawful businesses, as I stated before, in the past, still operate in the city of Vista. This disrespect for Vista's laws does endanger the public health, safety, and welfare of the city of Vista, its businesses, and its residents. I also agree with the staff and the report regarding the characterization of these illegal operations as being associated with increased service calls to the sheriff's department and the commission of certain types of crimes, including break-ins, and that illegal cultivation, processing, and cannabis manufacturing are associated with environmental damage and the introduction of unsafe products into the stem of commerce and consumption. Many times, community members have spoken at city council, myself included, about the impact of these illegal operations had on the loitering and unsafe traffic around their businesses. We know that there seems to be many outside the city of Vista who are willing to come to town to sell marijuana, grow marijuana, and operate factories to produce marijuana products like edibles and vape cartridges that are a scourge for our young people. Financial records show the JDA Property Management Group from Wildmark, California donated over $400,000 to this effort. Dove Brothers Management LLC from LA, nearly $100,000. Another $100,000-plus came from Barry Walker out of Palm Desert, and JT Investments, Inc. from Culver City in Arizona, an additional $100,000-plus. I understand that these regulations were not of your choosing, so we all hope that as this application process begins, that citizens will know when and how to contact the city regarding marijuana businesses that will locate near their businesses and homes, so they will properly and fairly know how and when their livelihood, the quality of life, will be affected. We hope that noticing will be clear and comprehensive to all, and that the city will utilize all to notification procedures. That's a lot, but got it all in. Thank you for your time, Dan. I appreciate it.
You only have 43 seconds left.
All right.
Okay.
Hi. My name's Benjamin. I'm a sophomore at Rancho Buena Vista High School, and I'm on the varsity golf team. So I came here to support the city in its efforts to protect the young people from the predatory marijuana industry that looks remarkably similar to the tobacco industry. Just like the tobacco industry, the marijuana industry will only profit if more people use marijuana for the first time, and those who use already use more marijuana daily. I support the permitting and processing fee of almost $10,000 proposed today, which seems to me to be too low for the type of research the staff report indicates will be necessary, especially the past criminal records of the applicants. Interesting that they even need to check into that. It is hard for me to imagine how this fee and the taxes which will come under consideration later could ever compensate for enabling drug use. I know the City Council expresses concerns to the marijuana businesses, but for those of you who didn't, it is likely to saying to the tobacco industry, yes, sell more, advertise more, promote more, addict more, bring more illness and unhappiness to individuals, families, and society, and no one would do that. So why will we have, so why do we have to do that for marijuana? The enabling of the large cultivation sites and factories and retail stores around town seems highly unfortunate for Vista, whose prides itself as a city who wants to be seen for all of its environmental beauty, who supports youth and in their activities, and who treasures academic and economic success for citizens. I understand that it is legal to possess and grow marijuana since Prop 64 passed, but then it always was legal, because for nearly the last 25 years, all you had to say was you were a patient or a caregiver, and there was no legal consequences. However, promoting its use in the garnished ways like we see in San Diego is another story. So I'm hoping the council would consider putting into place another marijuana prevention message, since the pot business will undoubtedly be lavish with their pro-marijuana use messages. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that ends our speakers, and so we'll go back to the council. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, I'm all for the moratorium, but as was said before, we really do need to look into some of these other businesses, especially when it comes to quality testing, because we always want to make sure that the public that is going to be utilizing cannabis gets a good product, and that they don't have to worry about mold and the consequences of that. Also, you know, I'm never a fan or proponent of industry making legislation, so that's why it is so important to make sure that our elected officials are going to be forward-thinking so that we can craft proper legislation, because if you don't do that, then, especially when the will of the people has been shown over and over that storefronts are wanted in the city, when you don't take that seriously and craft legislation that is going to make sure that there aren't these giant loopholes, then it opens up the possibility of something like Measure Z. So I think it will be a lesson learned for the council, and as far as, you know, I wanted to address the criminal history, I mean, even for the street vendors, they have to go through a live scan. So it's just part of the process to get, you know, permits to have this type of business. And, you know, can we imagine where we would be right now if tobacco was never regulated? And if you want to make a comparison between tobacco and cannabis, then just think of where we would be right now if there were zero regulation for tobacco. I mean, there'd probably be people smoking in here. So regulation is going to be a good thing, and I really would like us to get to the point where we are looking at some of these other ancillary businesses that are needed, and, you know, that are going to generate tax revenue for our city. So I am 100% in favor of the moratorium, because we want to make sure that Measure Z is implemented properly, and it has already taken a lot of staff's time, so focusing on that first, and then taking a look down the road, hopefully before the end of this year, to look at some of these other businesses. That's all I have to say.
Councilmember Green.
I pretty much just want to echo what both my councilmembers said, that this moratorium says that it's up to 10 months and however many, 15 days or whatever that was. But as a council, we do have the authority to implement policy. Prior to that, with Measure AA passing, we implemented the taxation policy for these new businesses, whether it's cultivation, testing, manufacturing, or delivery. So I definitely think that moving forward, we will be implementing policy, but with 31 applications, to give you an idea, that's 620 hours of lawyer work, all right? So what I'd like to do is, Daryl is kind of eat, sleeping, and drinking Measure Z right now, and to add anything on top of that for our city attorney's department, in my opinion, would be overwhelming and not allow us to properly implement the policy for Measure Z. So with that said, I definitely support this, and I think that it is a great just clarification item for anybody thinking they can come into Vista and open up what type, any type of marijuana, you know, shop that they want, per se. So this is something that definitely protects our city. So with that, I recommend that we, I will move that we close the public hearing and accept staff's recommendation to adopt the city ordinance extending the moratorium.
I'll second that.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Yeah, my question is, and I don't know if they're here this evening, but there was an entrepreneur who wanted to open a testing facility, and they've spoken to us numerous times, and this is why I was specifically asking the folks who came to speak tonight. I really wanted to hear what they had to say about the idea of testing. So the voters authorized 11 marijuana facilities, and they're gonna, I don't know if they all need testing. I don't claim to know anything about the business, but we've got somebody that wants to rent space in the business park, run a non-retail business, they want to, you know, invest in equipment, create jobs for people, and provide a service that I assume is a necessary service for the 11 who are going to be allowed to operate legally. And I guess my question is, you know, what conversations have we had to follow up with that individual? Are there reasons that we can think of as a council, or the staff can think of, or does the public have any reasons why we can think of why we wouldn't want to allow testing at least, you know, a regulated number of businesses? We have a Measure A provided a, an infrastructure for us to lay a tax on that. What would the reason that we would want to tell that entrepreneur kind of to pound sand right now and forget about it for 10 and a half months?
Well, from a staff perspective, and Daryl can speak to it as well, right now with Measure Z, as was mentioned by Ms. Contreras, Mr. Green, from a staff perspective, we're working very hard at trying to implement that and do the right thing. So I think at least for the initial next five, six months, we will be dealing with Measure Z and trying to implement it right. So putting more issues on the plate, I think, would be a tough thing, and that's why I think at a later date, we could look at that. If the council wishes to implement testing and allow for a process for people to do that, I don't, off the top of my head, I don't see why that would be a problem, but right now, we want to make sure we do a really good job with Measure Z until we start worrying about other issues.
And I generally agree, and I agree on with everything else, but, you know, of all the things that have happened recently, this, the testing thing is kind of the least objectionable, in my opinion. Would it be possible for us to provide an allowance for, if we created a testing category of business license, would it be possible for us to allow that applicant to finance the cost of an external firm of our choosing to perform the processing? Is that, is there a way we can alleviate the staff burden through a greater? I'm just, I don't want to tell somebody that wants to open a business and, you know, and pay people a good wage, you know, to forget about it, and particularly if there's an opportunity for them to work with the other 11 legal business owners.
Well, I'm guessing, I'm not answering your question directly, but I'm guessing there's more than just one, one testing business that would want to come to Vista. So if the council wanted to go forward with a measure like that, we would want to craft a selection process as well to make it fair, so.
Well, I think it's something for us to discuss, because this is not a company that's going to have advertising, it's not a company that's going to sell the product or promote the product, it's simply, you know, they're providing a scientific service, and it's the one piece of this thing that I just can't get my mind around, why we want to go, absolutely not. You know, I'm all about creating high-paying jobs, and if there are scientific jobs, you know, and somebody wants to invest, I, I'm not sure I understand.
From a staff perspective, I don't think we have an argument there. If the council wants to go forward with it, I just think, let us get through the implementation stages of Measure Z right now, and then we can, we can bring the issue back and get the council's consideration.
And I think research is the same kind of a thing. Testing and research would be the same kind of a business, you know, a regular business, but I think we need to get through six months at least of this, get this started. So anyway, Councilmember Green.
And that's exactly what I was going to say, too, is I'm all for testing, and testing is going to be the easiest one, I would think, to implement next, but with 31 applications and 11 awards for the, you know, initial dispensaries, I think that we have to implement policy. How many do we allow? How are they awarded? What's our unbiased process? You know, and how much liability do we expose ourselves to if we say, hey, the guy who came and spoke so many times, you know, we can't give anybody particular priority? So as opposed to having to come up with crafting all that legislation and, you know, work for staff right now, I just think that it would be better to wait, not the full 10 months. I mean, it's my understanding that perhaps by March, these dispensaries could be, if they check all the boxes, opening and producing, per se, so, you know, maybe May or June, you know, between now and then, we direct staff to do something with it. But I think it's going to be another big thing, where we have, you know, hundreds of people showing up, wanting to speak about it, and it's a lucrative business, so it's going to be a thing that we got to make sure that the city's not exposed. And right now, with all the concentration on Measure Z, I feel like it doesn't give us enough time to concentrate and really protect ourselves as a city, so I'd really like to just wait. And I'm a huge proponent of the industry from a, you know, testing perspective, and the taxation that we set up, I think it's going to be great, but for right now, I really want to make sure that Measure Z is implemented properly, we're not exposed to any frivolous lawsuits, per se, that we get the dispensaries operating that check all the boxes, and once that happens, we can move forward with other avenues. And I'm all for it, and if it happens sooner than later, I'm all for that as well. But I do think the moratorium is definitely necessary, because there's a big misconception that, hey, Vista just allowed marijuana, so everybody come on down and open up shop. So this is just a huge statement for us, and I like it, so. But yeah, 60 days, 90 days, if we got this all figured out and things are rolling, let's put Daryl to work, man. I'm good with it, so. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, we have a motion and a second, so cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. And that is the end of our public hearings. We have one discussion item this evening, and that is the proposed zone change at the southwest corner of Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga. Community Development Engineering Director John Conley is back, and he's going to provide the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and council. This is a proposed zone change. The location of the site is shown here at the aerial photo. It's a 5.2-acre parcel southwest corner of Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga Drive. Just to the east is the LA Fitness and the County Courthouse and Jail Facility. To the south is the DMV's office and local facility for North County. To the north is Buena Vista Creek, and to the west is an apartment development. The general plan designation is commercial services, and the zoning is commercial C1. To note, the northerly portion of the property is within the flood zone for Buena Vista Creek. Pacifica Companies submitted a preliminary proposal last year to develop the site with a self-storage building and a new vehicle storage lot, that would be within the flood zone area. It was reviewed by the City Council in the spring of 2018. They appear, I'm sorry, they appeared before the council for discussion in May and received direction to hold additional community meetings. They held those meetings in June and July of last year, and a summary of the input from those meetings was prepared by Pacifica and is included in your packet for review. Following that, Pacifica has submitted a revised plan for a self-storage facility that includes a community garden component. The proposed use that they've submitted would be consistent with the general plan, but would require a zone change. As you know, we bring all zone changes before the City Council for discussion of the application before we accept it, to make sure that there's support for the proposal. This shows the existing zoning at the top of the screen, which is C1. It's commercial retail, matches the zoning to the south and east. The proposal is to change it to C2, which is a slightly more intensive zoning that would allow self-storage with a special use permit. The zone change requests are at the discretion of the City Council. A formal recommendation is required by the Planning Commission, which would occur at the end of this process. As I mentioned, we're bringing this preliminary review before you for your direction. The applicant, Pacifica, is here as well, that has a presentation with a little more detail of what they're proposing, and I'm available for any questions following their presentation. Thank you.
Okay, I have the three, the applicant wants to speak, and so I have the three of them, so we'll start out with Abby Hawkins. I don't think you're on.
Oh. Maybe I have to adjust it a little bit higher. Sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Abby Hawkins with Pacifica Companies, along with a team member, Riley Webb. I'm here tonight to provide an update to our Hacienda project, and to give a little bit of background, Pacifica Companies is actively involved in Vista, including two senior housing communities in the Stanton Optical. We are currently looking to partner with the city of Vista in several different areas, and we look forward to being business partners and community partners with the city of Vista and its residents, and so we've approached this project in that mindset. We are here tonight to ask for your support to move forward with our application for a zone change. To give a recap, this, this site has been for sale for over a decade now, and so we are in, we are in the process of acquiring the property. The site has several challenges, including a 50-foot grade change, there's a lack of visibility, and access from 78, it's located next door to the detention center. There's also access challenges on Hacienda Drive, as well as traffic congestion on La Tortuga, and it's also located in 100 and 500-year floodplain. The original proposal, we included a community park, covered new car inventory parking for car dealerships in Vista, as well as a three-story self-storage facility, including a green roof. We presented this proposal to the South Vista Community Board. We received some of their input, saying that this is not the right neighborhood to have a community park. They supported the green roof, and they also suggested that if we were to include the parking, that we should screen it from all the roads. And they also agreed that storage would be the least traffic generating use for the site, but it is not currently available for a C1 zoning. So when I proposed this in May of last year, we were requested to place signage and do more community outreach. So we held two community outreach meetings, the first on June 25th. We presented this new site plan that included a three-story self-storage facility, 175 parking stalls for new car inventory, as well as the green roof. And then we did two different styles of rendering, a contemporary style and one that matches more of what the neighborhood is. The feedback that we received was, there was a preference for no parking at all. If we were to include parking, again, they would like it to be screened so that it wasn't visible from any of the streets. The preference was for the contemporary architectural style, but they would like us to include more wood paneling so that it ties in with the creek that's located across the street, and that they would like to see some sort of community amenity. So on our second community outreach meeting held on July 14th, we proposed three different site plans, as well as the two-style renderings. The preferred site plan was the three-story self-storage with the green roof with no parking at all. In addition to that, we also received feedback that a potential community garden might be a good amenity for this community in order to give back. And so, and then we also had more consensus that the contemporary architecture style is what they preferred, as well as making sure that the community itself was gated, that the property was gated. So we are presenting this as our final proposed site plan for our site plan for our application, which is a three-story self-storage facility with the green roof and a gated community garden. So the next steps would be for you guys to, we're, we're asking for your approval today to move forward with our application for a zone change. From there, we'll draft our environmental documents and continue to do community outreach as required by CEQA. And then in, once our process is done, then we'll come back and present to you our final plan, once we receive everything else. With that, questions, comments?
Thank you. Thanks, Abby. Do, I also have the other, two other, the other speakers, they want to speak at the same time, or are they just here for questions?
There, I think, my team member is just here for any questions that you guys have.
Riley, Riley is just here for questions?
Well, yeah, just here to help out with the community garden questions, if there are any.
And Gary also? Gary Williams, he's with you also?
Gary is here to read a letter.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Gary Williams. I'm a Senior Vice President with Callers International. I am the listing broker on this. I'm working for the ownership. Back in May of 2018, Ms. Sharon Trent wrote a letter that was read into the, the minutes. I don't, I'm not going to reread that letter to you, but I would like to read a letter from Steve Olson, who is the trust, the Trent Family Estate Trustee. He represents ownership. He writes, "In 2005, Ms. Sharon Trent and her husband purchased seven and a half acres of land on the corner of Hacienda and La Tortuga in Vista, California. Shortly thereafter, the local real estate and national economy collapsed, and the three building medical office complex proposed was unfeasible, and they offered the entire property for sale. In 2009, they sold two and a half acres to the state of California for the purpose of constructing a California Highway Patrol station. Since then, the remaining five acres have been listed for sale. Mr. Trent passed away in 2012. In mid-2017, Mrs. Trent was diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. This diagnosis led her to prioritize the sale of the property in order to square away her affairs for the surviving children. Therefore, the price was reduced considerably. They have had various interested parties over the years, but none as credible, creative, impressive as Pacifica Companies. Their drawings and plans to build on the property are above any other that they have seen, that we have seen, and from any other interested potential buyers. In May 2018, Pacifica presented their proposal, their proposed plan for the site to the City Council. As you may recall, I appeared, that's Steve Olson, I appeared on behalf of Mrs. Trent, who was unable to make the trip to speak and to support of the project due to her illness. The City Council requested a delay in the vote and additional outreach. During that delay, Mrs. Trent unfortunately passed away. I am unable to be here today," again, that's Steve Olson, "I am unable to be here today to speak on behalf of the project due to my presence being required elsewhere to handle matters of the estate. The sale of this property and the proposed project were one of Mrs. Trent's final priorities. I respectfully request that you honor Mrs. Trent's wishes and agree to his own change. If this request is not approved today, the estate may need to entertain less ideal projects in order to settle for the affairs. The revised proposed project by Pacifica is not only a good fit for the area, but also provides a requested amenity for the community. I encourage you to support this project." Thank you, Steve Olson, who again is the Trent Family Estate Trustee. I have copies of this letter. If I could leave them off with you, would that be suitable?
Thank you, sir. It looks like we have, our council have a lot of speakers here. So I will start with Councilmember Green.
First of all, I just want to thank Pacifica for the outreach, for the sign with the artist rendering on it. It's so hard to kind of envision what's supposed to go in there with just that big yellow City of Vista sign. So I do appreciate it. When this came in front of me on my agenda, I was blown away by the concessions that you've made for our citizens. I genuinely feel like this is above and beyond anything I expected. The fact that you've done away with the storage of the automobiles, which I thought was a huge moneymaker for this particular site, to accommodate my community is huge. I, I don't, can't imagine the financial, you know, loss that you took on doing that in order to accommodate the community, but I think that's huge. I love the idea of a community garden and giving back and allowing our community members to perhaps purchase a plot or whatever, because we don't have enough community gardens around. My biggest concern with this is I didn't see a whole lot of information about who maintains that garden, what type of nonprofit takes care of it, does the developer have responsibility in that. My biggest fear is that as a city, we get a community garden that, you know, we don't have the resources to take care of, and it's something that puts a further liability on the city and further hindrance on city staff to maintain. I know we have a community that's dedicated, I would think, to maintaining that community garden, but people move. And, you know, nonprofits, you know, collapse and succeed, you know, with the ebb and flow of kind of the economy. So one thing I do want to make sure of is with that community garden, that there's, you know, a Plan B, a Plan A, a Plan B, a Plan C, a Plan D, none of which include the city assuming liability for maintaining that community garden, or assigning plots, or selling plots. In my opinion, that's something that staff shouldn't have to, you know, take on. I, I don't want my planning department to have to deal with that. But the project as a whole is amazing. I mean, it's, it's great. From a standpoint of why would I change zoning? You know, you have a lady who's owned the estate for a long time. She's been trying to sell it for years. We live in an area where you should be able to sell your land and make money and, you know, provide for your family. I feel like as a council, we did a great job kind of halting the project. We knew it risked the cancellation of the transaction, but for us, our community's input and feedback is more important. And I feel like you guys really took that to heart. You worked really, really hard, and you've delivered a project that in my opinion is above and beyond anything that I would have even requested. So thank you for that. I am in support of this project. I am in support of the zone change. And it's because of all the legwork that you did and your community involvement. And I appreciate your commitment to Vista and, you know, helping us kind of upgrade our community and working with us as a council and as a city, and making sure that our citizens know their opinions do definitely matter. And we're going to make changes based off of what they request. So a big thank you from me and a big seal of approval from me. Thank you.
Councilmember Contreras.
I want to second what, what Joe said. You know, I was, this is an example of how outreach should happen when a zone change is proposed and development is proposed. So I really appreciate how much outreach you all did. And the end product really shows that process, because the community had a lot of concerns, and you were willing to listen, sit down, put pen to paper, and really craft several options, which, I mean, the, the feedback I've gotten back from the community is, you know, thank you so much for doing that. Now, along with the community garden, you know, the more gardens, the better. And I do want to echo what Councilmember Green said, that it would be great for the liability and upkeep to really fall on someone that, who's, who's not the city. That way, we can just maintain it in, in an orderly fashion without, without some of the hurdles that could come about if the city were, were to facilitate that process. So I am in support of this project. I think the green roof is super cool. So thank you so much for that. That's all I have to say. Councilmember Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also want to say thank you to Pacifica. That's my neighborhood. I just, I live right around the corner from there. You could walk to my house from there. Storage units, not really what we envisioned happening there. There was a long list of things we could envision there, and that's not on it. But we recognize that with the current zoning, it could be a lot worse. We could end up with something there that would really be detrimental to the community and to that neighborhood in particular. So we want to say thank you for the community outreach that you did to listening to South Vista Communities, listening to the neighbors that are right there in that area. It meant a lot to everybody that you listened to some of the things they said. But Madam Mayor, if it's all right, I'd, I'd like to ask somebody from Pacifica a couple of questions. And one of them is, in your opening comments, you stated that you heard the community talk about wanting a little bit more of the wood on the facade, to make it blend in a little bit more. And I know we had conversation about this. You know, there were people who liked one vision that you had in your, your paper and the other, some people liked the other. Most people wanted something a little bit more in the middle between the two. As, as a compromise, they were asking about the, the additional woodwork on the front. And you said you heard that, but you didn't say whether you were going to implement that. Are you going to be adding a little bit more wood to the front?
Sure.
Or to the, to the exterior?
Yeah, Riley Webb, Pacifica Companies. Thank you for the question, Councilmember. Yes, we plan on incorporating that suggestion. We have a great design team that we're going to be working with for the entire project. And so that is one thing that we have heard and we do plan to implement.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you on that one. And then the second one is the community garden. And everybody in, in this neighborhood, they're really excited to have the community garden. And I think they are fabulous to have all over the community. I, I think every neighborhood should have one. And we do have a couple in Vista already. But there is a little bit of heartburn about who is going to have to take ownership of the community garden and, and run it. And I was wanting to know if you could provide some information. What is it your vision is for the community garden? What, how do you see implementing this?
Sure. So in my previous life, I was on the other side of the dais and working for the city as well. And actually worked on community garden regulations down in the city of San Diego. So I've seen a variety of different structures for community gardens and how they can be incorporated in the community, from a city taking it over to nonprofits, to the owner of the land. We're envisioning being able to lease that, that particular part of the parcel to a nonprofit group that's represented by the community. We would provide them whatever amenities that they need to run that, that facility, whether it's water meter connections and all of that. But we would envision that a nonprofit group represented by the community would be in charge of that property. They would be able to do the outreach, they would be able to do the plots as they saw fit.
Okay.
So that's kind of what we're envisioning right now. Obviously, as we're going through this process, we'll work with staff to make sure that it meets their requirements and what they would like for that particular amenity.
Okay. Now, I might be misremembering, but you and I sat in on a meeting together down in San Diego regarding community gardens a couple of years ago. Am I correct on that?
That's correct.
Am I remembering it correctly?
Yeah.
So I, I do remember having a conversation, and I went all the way down to San Diego to have this meeting on community gardens, because I think it's something that is valuable to our community and I want to try to bring here. So I'm very supportive of that. And I'm glad to, to see that you want to work with the community. And anything I can do to help facilitate that, I'm happy to do to facilitate getting the nonprofit going and getting that neighborhood involved in that. So I appreciate very much. You came into our community and had a vision. You shared it. You allowed the neighbors and the community and the constituents to tweak it a little bit, make it something that, that was not only palatable, I don't want to make it sound like it was just at that level, but you made it something that the community actually could embrace. And I appreciate that very, very, very much. And I want to say, we have a letter, I've gotten a couple of texts from constituents today who could not be here tonight, who wanted to express the same thing to Pacifica. So I just want to say thank you for that. So, so with that, I'm trying to find which, I, I'm out of my glasses, so I'm using two drugstore pairs, and I'm not sure they're, neither one are working well. But more information than you needed. I'm so sorry. So I would like to go ahead and accept the application for the proposed zone change at the southwest corner of Hacienda Drive and La Tortuga Drive. And it says provides direction to staff. What direction are you asking for particularly regarding the community garden?
The direction I need is that there is a majority in support of accepting the application.
Oh, well, I am.
So I think there's a majority.
Okay.
I will.
So you don't need a motion, a formal motion?
Sure, I'd like a formal motion. That'd be great.
Okay. I move that we accept the application.
I second that.
Deputy Mayor Franklin.
Did we, and I, I kind of heard a little bit of an answer on the community garden issue, but, and I'm, I'm not suggesting, just asking, is the nonprofit going to pay the water bill for the irrigation of the garden?
So we've discussed this at the staff level, and what we envision is, this is a special use permit, so we can apply a condition of approval that requires the applicant to enter into an agreement with an operator for the community garden that we would be a party to, and that they would be responsible for all aspects of the garden. And in the event that the garden ceased to operate, that the area would be landscaped in accordance with the city's landscape ordinance.
Works for me. Thanks.
That's very doable. Thank you.
Okay, my only worry is, is that's kind of where the homeless people live and whether they go in there and steal all the food from the garden. No, we'll see. Oh, we have something to say about that?
We do envision gating the garden off and having it under a key. So each person that would have a plot within that garden would be able to access the garden, but individuals that are not supposed to be accessing the garden would not be able to get in.
Okay. Okay. Okay, but I do support the zone change. I support the project. I actually was okay with the parking. So I guess everybody threw talking?
Madam Mayor.
Nope. Deputy Mayor isn't.
Your final question on the parking issue, how strong was the opposition? Was it just a few people on the parking?
No, it was the entire community.
Okay. All right.
Well, it didn't, the, the list didn't, doesn't reflect that. They're listed, you know, says like, the outreach contact of list in the comments. There are only not nine, and two supported the project. One was the broker. Two had no comment. One wanted housing, and the other three were okay with it. So.
There were, when we talked about this before here at council, there were quite a few people who spoke. And then, of course, at different events and, and communications with constituents and neighbors, nobody really wanted the, the parking with the solar panels over it. That was, that was the, that was the sticky wicket in this whole thing.
I just, they didn't, this didn't reflect, they get brought, this didn't reflect it. No, not at all. So the community outreach didn't, you know, I knew when they were here, they, that, we heard that, but then, but and I, my worry is it could have a medical marijuana store there, so I prefer storage.
Well, my, my.
It still is storage.
The reason I asked the question is because, you know, we, we want to encourage and foster the automobile dealer industry in Vista. And we have a brand new automobile dealer that's, you know, normally Honda. And I'm just, you know, obviously, they need that service. They need a place to store vehicles. And, and I'm also just thinking, you know, the surplus revenue from that might help the long-term owner of the project contribute to the community garden. So I, that's why I'm looking at it and just wondering, you know, what was the real depth of opposition? You know, and is it just about the solar panels? Or is it?
No, it was about the parking, about the solar panels. It would just be a parking lot, right there in a residential neighborhood.
It's right across from the jail. I mean, it's like, you're right there, where the CHP is and the jail is there. And I mean, it isn't like a, it's kind of hidden from the freeway. Nobody sees it too much. I mean, it wouldn't be a place for a shopping center. You know, I kind of analyzed what, what you could do there.
I'm just going to take objection to that, that nobody sees it because it's across from the freeway and you can't see it through the freeway. That's a neighborhood. You can see it. Every time we drive by there, you would see nothing but.
I go by there every day.
La Tortuga. So for the neighborhood, it would be very visible every single day. So that was something that the community and the neighbors in that area did not want to be looking at every day. Perhaps you have someplace in Shadow Ridge you'd like to put a parking lot?
If I can just interject a little, from the community members that we did hear from, the parking was a big concern, but it wasn't only just from the parking. It was also from bringing the trucks in, which would contribute to the congestion on La Tortuga.
Which is only one lane.
Which is one lane.
Coming up, coming up to that spot.
Correct. So between the parking lot itself, and then us not being able to, because it sits in a floodplain, we can't put in like a solid brick wall like they had originally suggested. So not being able to screen for the cars was a big concern. So they, they thought that, you know, they would really be visible from the roads, that we wouldn't be able to do too much. And then it was the, the traffic from the cars being brought in.
Okay. I'll go with that.
Yeah, I hadn't realized there was an issue with the screening. I, I still thought that was possible. So that answers my questions. Thank you.
And mine too. So, okay. Councilmember Contreras.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, with.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, I mean, with the parking component, it was a, it was a nonstarter for the community. So the reason that we're here and we're all in support is because the community came together and said, this is what we want. And Pacifica did an amazing job really bringing to fruition the desire of that community, especially with the challenges that they've had and continue to have with some of the amenities that have been lost. So I think that this is a fantastic project. And again, I'm so thankful. I wish that certain projects around my neighborhood had this much attention to it. So thank you again. And I think without the parking there, it looks great. And obviously, this still makes financial sense, or else we wouldn't be discussing it right now. So.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second, don't we? Okay, you want to cast your votes? That motion passes unanimously. Okay, that leads us to our oral communications. And so we have, each speaker is given three minutes to speak on matters not on the agenda. And so we have one, two, three, six speakers here. So we will start with, and if you want to line up, and I'll have, I'll call one name, and then the other two can stand over here and wait in line, and that will move them along faster. So our first one is Linda Friedman, followed by Merrill Leeds, followed by Nancy Oshley.
Good evening. My name is Linda Friedman, and I am a Vista resident. My question tonight is to the council, is why is there not a response to the climate crisis on the goals for the city for 2018-20? Extensive work was invested in 2018 that identified areas of focus to address climate issues impacting Vista. However, there is no mention of any goal addressing climate or climate action plan, which was constructed by our city's focus group. NASA has issued the following statement. Multiple studies published in peer reviewed scientific journals show that 97% or more of actively publishing climate scientists agree, climate warning trends over the past century are extremely likely due to human activity. In addition, most of the leading scientific organizations worldwide have issued public statements endorsing this position. This was issued at climate.nasa.gov, if anyone's interested. Even the American Medical Association agrees that, and I quote, "Our AMA supports the findings of the Intervent Gunfermental Panel on Climate Change's Fourth Assessment Report, and concurs with the scientific consensus that the Earth is undergoing adverse global climate change and that anthropogenic contributions are significant. In light of all scientific findings, I suggest that Vista's omission of any goal to address climate is irresponsible. Not only our lives, but the lives of our progeny from this time forward will be severely and detrimentally affected if a halt to climate change is not aggressively acted upon. Therefore, I request that the city council readdress climate and include this in its goals and objectives, and immediately provide the community with a plan to go forward. We don't have time to wait." Thank you.
Thank you. Merrill Leeds, followed by Nancy Oshley, followed by Kathleen Boyle.
Good evening, council. My name is Merrill Leeds, and I'm here to speak today about what is arguably the most urgent public safety issue we face today. There are 3.6 million pounds of high-level radioactive waste being temporarily stored at the San Onofre Nuclear Generating Station. On August 3, 2018, a near-miss accident occurred during the transfer of high-level waste to a new dry storage facility, and was revealed publicly by a whistleblower working at the site. The publicity resulting from this near-miss accident has brought urgent focus to the fact that every community within a 50-mile radius of San Onofre, including Vista, must take any and all actions necessary to ensure prevention of a disaster that is potentially greater than Fukushima, Chernobyl, and Three Mile Island combined. If such a worst-case scenario incident were to occur, one, there would be immediate chaos because there is no emergency plan in place for such an occurrence. Two, Camp Pendleton would become incapacitated and therefore unavailable for national security and local disaster relief. Three, millions of humans and animals could be at risk of suffering death or severe long-term illness. And four, due to the long-term radioactive fallout, the entire region could be uninhabitable for thousands of years. A KPBS news broadcast, which aired on January 2, 2019, disclosed that investigations by the NRC and independent nuclear waste experts conclude that the accident resulted in inattentiveness of workers, and that design flaws could lead to future radioactive breaches. As if these aren't reasons enough to halt the soon-to-be-resumed storage transfer of 44 remaining canisters, vulnerabilities to disaster become far greater when even other factors are taken into consideration. One, the nuclear waste in question will be toxic for 250,000 years. Number two, the canisters being used are only guaranteed to last 10 to 25 years. Then what? Three, the storage location is 100 feet from the ocean and approximately 18 inches above sea level and near a major earthquake fault. Four, like Fukushima, the location is in the middle of a tsunami zone. Five, the location is in an area ripe for terrorist attack. I therefore request that the council establish a resolution demanding that our state and federal leaders enact legislation to implement a plan to provide safe transfer and long-term storage of this high-level radioactive waste. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right.
Nancy Oshley, followed by Kathleen Boyle, followed by Nikki Leeds.
Thank you, council, for the discussion earlier. I really appreciate how you addressed my concerns earlier. And tonight, I'm here to ask you about another environmental issue, offshore oil drilling. Our current administration has actually rolled back regulations that will allow offshore oil drilling in the state of California. And I'm sure, as you can all agree with me, that San Diego has probably the most beautiful coastline. My husband was born and raised in Ventura County. And several years ago, while vacationing there, and I took a nice walk along the beach, enjoying it all. And then I got back to our hotel, noticed the bottoms of my feet had tar all over them. And you know what? It took half a jar of peanut butter to get rid of that tar. And that tar was from the oil drilling that's going on off the coast of Ventura. So, you know, I don't want to see that happening in San Diego. Currently, what's happening is, most of the governors along both the east and the west coast and the Gulf Coast have actually reiterated that, no, we don't want oil drilling off our coastline. And currently, in San Diego, Oceanside, Carlsbad, Del Mar, and also the city of San Diego have passed resolutions saying, no, we don't want oil drilling off of our coast. And also, Escondido tomorrow night actually will be addressing this. So I'm here to ask the city council if you'll look at something similar. I made a copy of what Carlsbad had passed, and also a little info sheet. And that's it. So if I could just hand this off to you, and please read the information and consider it in the near future. Thank you.
Thank you. And I didn't know peanut butter took off tar on your feet. I learned something new. Something new. And baby oil, he says. Okay, Kathleen Boyle, followed by Nikki Leeds, followed by Joseph Evans.
Hi, good evening. I want to talk about trees. I just did a mental, we're the Debbie Downers of the day. I guess it's been pretty mellow here. But my brain took a little diversion with Merrill talking about San Onofre. I went to a public meeting about a month ago, and I was amazed, the people from, it's Southern California Edison, right? They're the ones, extremely blasé. And I saw the look on some of your faces when Merrill was going over, like it's 18 feet, you know, from the ocean, and it's near, it's on, all these horrible things. And they're extremely, no, it's not going to happen. No, it's not a problem. We got that covered. Anyway, it's, it's pretty amazing. And I think a lot of people just don't want to think, it's so terrible. People just shut it off, because we can't think about it. Anyway, trees. We all love trees, not controversial. And trees are known to be good for cooling, cooling the climate. They're also good for calming traffic, according to one of the traffic engineers that we met last year. We love trees. I don't, I don't see Vista giving a lot of importance to trees. We just heard about green roofs, and I would imagine green roofs would have trees. And so we could have, we could have green roofs all over the place in Vista. They do it in Chicago. If they can have trees on their roofs in Chicago, I think we could. In the planning sessions, and I think it was, was it last spring, there was, there was a big planning session. We broke into groups. A lot of you were there. And then we went back, and we, a few weeks later, and they had the blueprints. And then it was presented at city council. And at each of those times, trees were brought up. And then at the very next time, where's the trees? Oh, the trees. And then the very next time, where's the trees? Oh, no more trees. So they kept getting left off. The traffic, and this was the plan for traffic improvements in North Santa Fe, if you remember that whole discussion. So the traffic engineer of that consulting firm you hired said that that's something that calms traffic, trees. If you're driving down the street with trees on both sides, the driver feels like, oh, I'm somewhere. Whereas if there's no trees, it's wide open, and then there's this feeling of, I got to get somewhere. So it slows down traffic, it cools. And so I was amazed to see, oh, and trees, these are shade trees. So I know in, with the Paso Santo Fe, there's kind of trendy palm trees that go up. They don't even go like that. We need shade trees, not cute trees. So I was looking on the city website, and I saw this street tree master plan. And I got so excited. And I thought, wow, I didn't know Vista had a street tree master plan. I was just, it was from 2007. So I don't know whatever happened with that. I guess it didn't happen. But it looked like they were going to be giving people trees that they then had to maintain. And this is more for some of the neighborhoods. But there's a lot of places that would help with trees. But this master plan showed even commercial streets, like how you could carve out little openings, have the trees grow in there. So there were a lot of good ideas. So City of Vista 2007 Tree Master Plan, it'd be good to implement now. Thank you.
Thank you. Nikki Leeds, followed by Joseph Evans.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Nice to see you. Happy New Year. My name is Nikki Leeds, and you all recently received an email at my request with a video link to CAL FIRE's 2018 year-end update. I hope you all took the opportunity to watch it. The CAL FIRE Information Officer's year-end report reminded us that there were 70, excuse me, 7,500 wildfires in 2018 that killed 100 people. 1.8 million acres burned, and just over 22,000 structures burned to the ground. Our own Vista Fire Chief recently updated the council that we can now expect year-round fire season as the new norm. I mention all of this because I'm alarmingly baffled as to why the Vista Council chose not to prioritize climate change, which has resulted in these catastrophic wildfires spawned by drought and extreme and extended heat waves. It is my understanding that the council will be presented with an updated climate action plan within the coming months. This blueprint will further elucidate the need to prioritize a bold and substantive climate action plan that will require a full-time climate action plan director to carry out the implementation of such a plan. Our fire department will certainly be involved in much of the cap, as most aspects of wildfire preparedness and remediation fall under its jurisdiction. The City of Vista needs to hire this full-time climate action plan director to begin the urgent work ahead. There's no time for half measures. Please, there's no time. You all know this. I know you know this. Our city council's number-one job is to keep the residents of Vista safe, and therefore, I request you amend your City of Vista's 2018-2020 top goals to include climate crisis and wildfire preparedness post-haste, because our lives and those lives of our children and grandchildren depend on it. Thank you so very much.
Thank you. Joseph Evans.
My name is Joseph Evans. I'm basically an analytical chemist. I have had the, I've been doing that for 30 years. Been lab director at three separate laboratories. Two of them happen to have been cannabis testing laboratories in Denver. I opened a lab in Afghanistan for the Army for forensic analysis. Just giving you my credentials, because I could certainly be here for hours, for any of you that took chemistry or any type of chemistry class in high school or college, I'm sure I could bore you for many hours about the details of analytical chemistry. But tonight, I heard something, and so I thought I should share. Right now, in the state of California, there are approximately 30 to 35 licensed laboratories for testing cannabis. It is estimated to keep with the current cannabis economy that exists in California, that 300 laboratories are needed. Hence, it's a 90% growth rate that's anticipated. Number two, it's very difficult, very difficult to open up a cannabis testing lab. The analytical equipment alone is over $1 million. Plus, you have to have the expertise, plus all the licensing and everything else you would have to do for a normal cannabis business. So why am I talking about this? Because you kind of wanted to know. And one of the things is, right now, I have been on the search in Southern California of a place I could open a lab. So today, I happened to, I believe, closed on a lease in Irvine, yet I live in Carlsbad. Hence, I didn't have anywhere local I could go to open the laboratory. Hence, the need for laboratories in the area, or the need to allow laboratories in the area. Now, finally, why are laboratories needed? Number one, it is a requirement of the state that all legal cannabis be tested. Number two, I have been at many, many public hearings where I hear these emotional outcries from parents who are giving cannabis medicinally to kids, and they cannot get their product tested. And guess what? Parents that give cannabis to kids don't want high THC cannabis because they don't want psychoactive components in the cannabis that they're giving to their kids. Hence, a real need for laboratory testing. It tests for the potency, and it tests for the safety of the product. And finally, finally, and I think this is most important, people talk about the black market in cannabis. The black market is here. I know this. I've been around in Vista talking to some people. They're going to stay in the black market until they have a way to get into the legal market. So hence, they will be there regardless of whether you want them. And finally, in order to get them into the legal market, you need the testing labs to support the business. So that's kind of my final comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that is the end of our speakers. And so we will go into our remarks. And I'll start with my mayor's comments here. So I wanted to thank you to the Chamber of Commerce for hosting the annual State of the Community luncheon. That's coming up next Monday, January 28. And we're going to have a video broadcast of my State of the City address, and a list of the city's significant accomplishments from 2018. And that will be posted on the city's web, or the city's homepage, cityofvista.com, our website. So next, the new art exhibition, Golden Visions, which features works of artists age 55 and older, is now on display outside the council chambers through February 7. And they're great, you should take a look at the art out there. It's, it's pretty cool. This Friday, January 25, is Fines Free Friday at the Vista Library. Return your library books or DVDs on the last Friday of each month, and the library will forgive your fines. That's a good thing. And one other really exciting thing, the company Restoration Hardware is opening an outlet store that is opening in the former Babies R S building in North County Square. And their grand opening is this Thursday, January 24. And we're very excited to welcome them to Vista. And with that, I will move on down the line to council member Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was out here earlier at the reception for the Golden Visions art exhibit, and some pretty nice things. So if you have a minute after the meeting and you haven't looked at it yet, I encourage you to go look at them. They're different media. They're, I guess it's a mixed media show, and some of them are very creative. And congratulations to the four, first, second, third place, and honorable mention. I'm glad I wasn't a judge for that one. I wanted to say that the Public Safety Committee meeting for Sandag last Friday was canceled. I don't know why, but we're going to go ahead with our one in February. Last week, I was in Sacramento with the League of California Cities for some meetings, including the Revenue and Taxation Policy Committee meeting, where we talked about the governor's newly released proposed budget. And I'm sure you all heard about it in the news as well. One of the big topics of discussion was how the new governor wants to tie SB new governor wants to tie SB 1 funding, transportation funding, to housing. And so that's, that's a lot of discussion going on with that. The threat that if cities don't do whatever the new rules for housing would be, then they would withhold our SB 1 funding, which we were promised for our local roads. But they also talked about, one of the concerns was, while he was campaigning, his website talked about his promise to withhold property tax monies from cities that weren't going to be meeting the new requirements. That has since been taken down from the website, but it didn't go unnoticed and unreported. Couple of other things of interest coming up. The state legislature is going to be reintroducing some new drone legislation regarding delivery services as well as privacy issues. So that'll be an interesting one to look at. And then AB 931, the police use of force, they're reintroducing another bill along the same lines for this time around, this legislative session. So those are just a couple of the highlights that I brought back. And then next week, I will be going with the league again to the Mayor's and Council Members Academy, along with Councilwoman Contreras. I believe our city manager will be joining us on that trip. So that's all I have. And thank you all for being here tonight and participating in our discussions. I like when you're here, and I love to hear what you're thinking about, what's important to you. So thank you. And staff, always. Thank you.
Hang out back there. Stay awake. Deputy Mayor.
I'd also like to thank all the citizens of Vista who took the time to come tonight and share their thoughts with us. And I'd also like to say thanks to staff for their good work in bringing some of our often wild ideas that we get to fruition. I appreciate that. Thank you.
Councilmember Green.
All right. So I serve as the vice chair for the Regional Solid Waste Association, and we had a meeting on January 10, 2019. And just a few things to report back. We always like to see how the assembly bills are affecting us and what we're doing to kind of meet the California laws. In 2014, AB 1826 was passed, which had to do with organic waste recycling. And I'm happy to report that in our county, we're way ahead of the curve. EDCO, which is a, you know, the service that obviously provides the waste to our community here, the Waste Services, has an anaerobic digestion system, actually, that is going to be opening up very soon, which will actually recycle organic waste and convert it into renewable natural gas, which is going to be, you know, powering all of their trucks. So we're really working towards being a net-zero-waste community from that aspect. And there are restrictions that were implemented in 2014 that were actually, surprisingly enough, hitting. So when I got on this board in 2016, two years deep, it was real scary. How are we going to do it? And I feel like we're really, you know, working towards being on the tip of the spear, per se, when it comes to organic waste recycling here in North County. The other thing is, you guys might have noticed that AB 1884 went into effect here in the City of Vista. That is the straw ban by request only. So if you have been straw-shamed for ordering your straw, I apologize. But it is a ban statewide in California. And all of our restaurants here in the City of Vista will only provide straws on request. So that is something that you will feel as you're sitting down at our local amazing restaurants here in Vista, which I recommend you all only eat in the City of Vista at our restaurants, because they're amazing and extremely adequate for dining options. The other thing is, and something that we hear a lot, is, hey, we live in Vista, but we're in the county. You know, what do you have for us? What are you doing for us here in the county? We have what's called the North County Fire Protection District, which our fire department services for the county areas within the City of Vista. I've been approached a few times by county residents in regards to household waste recycling, and they can't go to our household waste recycling plant here in Vista. They actually have to drive out to Borrego Springs, Ota Mesa area, or all the way down Chula Vista, since they're county residents. So the North County Fire Protection District came to our meeting and proposed to possibly pick up the tab for that type of recycling for the county residents. In speaking with the entire board at RISWA, we all have areas in our cities that are county areas that our county residents are being left out. So there's been calls made to the county of San Diego, and there's actually works happening for the county of San Diego to work with RISWA, my organization, to have our areas subcontract that household waste. And as opposed to North County Fire Protection District picking up the cost, hopefully, our new county supervisor's office, who's been speaking with RISWA, will be allocating a portion of their budget towards making sure that our county residents have easy access to recycle their household waste. Because if they don't have access to recycle it, you're going to see them on the side of the road and, you know, obviously affecting our environment. So I thought that was really cool that they showed up. The last thing is, we're looking at increasing our allotment to the cities. When I started, we gave $1,000 per year to every city to advertise solid waste recycling, which, as you know, city the size, that's not a lot of money. We've increased it up to $7,000, and we're looking at increasing it again for the next year so that we can bring more awareness to the environmental issues that are facing our community. So that is my report from RISWA. We typically meet the first Thursday of every month down at Solana Beach in Fletcher Cove. So if you ever want to come hang out, you are all more than welcome to come. That is it.
Councilmember Contreras.
Want to shamelessly plug my town hall for District 1. We'll be having quarterly town halls. The first one is going to be March 6 at the Linda Road Center. Doors open at 6:00 PM, and the meeting starts at 6:30. I hope to see you all there. We will primarily be focusing on District 1, but it is open to all Vistans. And also, if anybody has any questions, they can stop by on Tuesday. Every Tuesday that the Civic Center is open, my office is open for open office hours from 7:30 AM to 10:30 AM. And I did want to say that we are in a climate crisis, and it does need to be taken seriously. And we need urgency because the 24/7 fire danger is real, and it's only going to increase. So I'm all ears with any suggestions, recommendations, or any groups that are meeting out there that want to have more discussion on it. San Onofre is a ridiculous problem. I can't believe it exists, but it's real, and it is a major threat. And when it comes to no offshore drilling, I think that's a discussion that we should have here in the City of Vista, since so many other cities have taken up that discussion, especially when it pertains to offshore drilling, impeding any kind of naval operations, as we are a heavily naval city. So that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you so much for staying. Next time, bring another friend that's never been here. And I look forward to one day seeing this chamber completely jam-packed again. Thank you.
City manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one comment. On Thursday, SG Genie will be doing some work around Civic Center in Palo Vista. And so from 9 to 3, that signal will be on red flash. So should just be between those hours and hopefully be done before the peak time traffic.
Hopefully. City attorney?
Nothing further to add this evening, Mayor. Thank you.
City clerk?
Just wanted to mention again, the mayor had mentioned in the past, but we do have some commission openings. Our incumbents must apply by January 31, and the new applicants must apply by February 10. There's information on the website, or please feel free to come see me after the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. How about Claire? Assistant, city clerk. No, nothing? Nothing else? I have one other thing for a general. So we've lost one of our CDBG, long, long-time people that served. That was Lenore Avril. And so we'd like to adjourn tonight's meeting to honor the memory of Lenore Avril, who passed away on December 9. She served on our Community Development Block Grant Citizens Advisory Committee, CDBG, since 1989 and was active throughout the community. She was a ser optimist, and she'll be missed by many of us. So with that, we will adjourn our meeting at 7:51.